Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, and it is ten a.m. All members of the court are present, and this meeting is called order. Commissioner Cooper will deliver the invitation and lead us into the edge if everyone will please rise.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to help us make the right decisions concerning our citizens. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Item number three on the agenda is a public hearing whereby the Commissioners Court will receive citizen comments concerning Mr. Paul Watts's request for Hardin County to close a seven hundred and fifteen foot by fifteen foot section of a roadway called Magallion Road located in precinct two. Commissioner Kirkendall, I think you received that letter from Mr. Watts?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say on the record before you proceed that we also sent certified letters to the residents near that area, and that was Ms. Linda Eason, Mr. John Low, and Mr. R.C. Watts.
Yes, sir, and Mrs. Eason is here. So, just to bring the court up to date, Paul, Mr. Paul Watts, who owns that section of Magallion Road, it would be on the east end. Judge, if you want to pull up that map.
Yes, sir.
Basically where...
Let me share that where everybody can see it.
Basically where, about where this road, where the beginning is.
Out here?
Yes, sir. Mr. Watts owns that all the way to twenty-nine thirty-seven on both sides of the road. He has submitted a survey, and we have looked at the property, have talked to the appraisal district, and he has been paying property taxes on the property. So according to the transportation code, he has a legal right to petition the county to close that section of road. We've gone over the reasons why he wants to do that. Also bring to the court's attention that Shirley and I had a conversation yesterday. The election is coming up, and there's a concern about, about moving on this today. Would the address changes, if we change the name of the road? And then with the general election, so we will be considering all options when we get to this to delay due to the election and due to address changes, and that way there's, there's no issues between the elections office, tax office, and the residents for their right to vote in the general election. So with that, Mrs. Eason, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would.
If you don't mind, can you proceed up here so we can have it on the record, please?
Uh, yes, I've been living there since nineteen ninety-four, and there were some other people lived on that road.
I need you to state your name, I'm sorry, I should have said that.
My name is Linda Eason.
And you live on Magallion Road?
I live on seventy-four thirty-nine Magallion Road, Sylvestre, Texas.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Uh, we've been living there since nineteen ninety-four. My husband and I bought it from Martha Sanford that lived there for years. And my brother Jayon Hutto, Larry Hutto lived there on that road. Off Lee Croppername lived there years ago, but it's been years and years back. It was a county road at one time. So I don't see why the reason should be closed, because that road there is like a mercy road. If someone really was to get sick down on that end, they'd have to go all the way around to the other end of the ambulance to come down, or go around the other way on twenty-nine thirty-seven, down that way, come around to that person's house that lives across the road from them. That ambulance gets that people, they could die. And that used to be a bus route and everything, so I'm, I'm not understanding why the road. I know he says he owns the road, but where his stop is, my end, road ends are to my property.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I mean, I don't understand what the reason is about this. It shouldn't be closed because it could be like a mercy road for the ambulance to get turned, case it's real mercy or something, you know? So, I, I don't know what's going, I don't know why the purpose of it is, even though he says he owns it.
Yes, ma'am. I concur with that. With that being said, the transportation code does afford him the right to petition the court due to the fact that he owns property on both sides and that he has been paying taxes. Had he not been paying taxes, or had the road been carved out years ago, it wouldn't even been issued.
Well, I don't even know what we're having the court then if it's going to be an issue. I mean, why these, you know?
Well, the, um...
There's a lot of people that goes back and forth from work that lives on the other end. It takes that road to keep them having to go around, keep them being late on their job, that takes that route.
And depending on what action we take today, I'd be more than happy to hear from anyone who objects to it. So...
Chris, if the court goes through with this, explain how, where, where Mr. Watts's last name?
Watts.
Mr. Watts's property starts, so let's say it's right in here. What would we do? Would we gate it off?
That would be up to Mr. Watts, because at that point it would be his property.
Okay, and coming from, uh...
Twenty-nine thirty-seven.
Twenty-nine thirty-seven is the same thing?
No, it would be a private driveway, because the only person who lives there on there is Brother R.C. Watts.
Okay, I'm familiar with where Ms. Eason's residence is, I believe it's on this side, isn't it?
This side.
On the right, on that side, ninety-two.
Yeah, she's about...
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be blocking a residence from the east?
No, no. In fact, what we would do on that ninety-two end, Commissioner, that would become Madison Drive. And then where Mr. Watts would either fence off or do whatever for his property, that would become a private drive. It wouldn't even have a name.
So the county would maintain it up to that point?
Yes, sir. Nothing changes other than the fact it becomes a dead-end road.
Okay, and then they would still have access off of twenty-nine thirty-seven, but the county would maintain it to be private?
Correct, and Brother R.C. knows about that. And then the only other thing too for the court's consideration is Ms. Eason would have to move her mailbox to Highway ninety-two, because the post office rules say they don't go down dead-end roads.
So if, if we did that, her, her residence would be on that end and not the private end?
Correct, yeah. She would still be on the county road, still have access to county services. We would maintain the road.
So then, this would come to her house from ninety-two to Madison Road?
Yes, sir. And there's two houses. Ms. Eason's, if you're going down Magallion, is on the left, and then Mr. Lowes is on the right.
And is that right about in this area here?
Yes, sir.
What is, uh, the county attorney?
County attorney has looked at it, and he confers with the transportation code that Mr. Watts has the legal right to petition the court for closure. It's a real narrow section of road. It's about fifteen foot. One of the issues that Mr. Watts is having, and Mr. Watts, if you want to get up and speak, feel free, they're going through his property, which his son lives on, because the road is so narrow. Has a grandson that plays out there, he's concerned for his safety. And then they have found drug needles on their property. And so he's trying to limit the, the traffic just for the safety of his family.
Coming in from twenty-nine thirty-seven, how many residents would be then on the private drive?
One, Mr. R.C. Watts.
R.C.
Mr. Mr. Paul, you, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Ms. Eason. Please state your name for the record.
Paul Watts.
Morning, Mr. Watts.
Yeah, uh, the reason I'm doing this on account of paying taxes on it. I want to keep the lane, you know? But the traffic through there is, it's a nuisance, you know? But the thing of it is, is, uh, it don't hurt nobody. Everybody, she got a road to the ninety-two, and it's just that one section, and it's, it ain't hurting nobody.
Mr. Watts, is your address on Magallion or off of twenty-nine thirty-seven?
No, my, I live out on ninety-two. Now, that, that's my house, but my son's living in it.
Okay, and that's, uh, R.C.?
Jenna, Jenna.
R.C. is his brother.
Yeah.
So they both live on Magallion on this private, what would be the private road later?
Yeah, they both have access to it.
Now, you pay the taxes there on that, on that property, that's your interest.
Yeah, and taxes going up so bad. The only other thing I got to talk about, when you and I meet in liability, since I pay taxes on that, I own it, somebody walks over and trips, who's liable?
Uh, if you own the property, you, you could be listed, I, I'm not an attorney, but I would think you could be listed as a petitioner.
Go on, please. So I don't want that liability, for one thing, you know?
I would definitely, uh, go with what the Commissioner in that precinct recommends as well as our county attorney, but I think this is a very bad idea.
What?
Uh, that road's been open for years. I mean, I've been deputy for sixteen years up there, and that's a good cut through for immediate emergency.
Yeah, it's a cut through, that's all it is.
Yeah.
It's a shortcut. They got a state highway that go right out to the road, go both ways, state maintained. And all they do is go by there and throw out trash and dump and take off. That's all.
I'll pick trash up out of the garbage.
I, I regret, the only thing I regret is Ms. Linda.
Oh, you don't have no feelings for nobody but yourself, oh, myself too.
Yeah.
You're doing it out of pure spite, unless...
That's right.
That's right, you are, and that's, that's been open for years, and here you come in with the closed road.
For twenty-nine thirty-nine, uh, twenty-nine thirty-seven, there was a, you'd be a location right there in our field there. The bumper unit. They got a compressor station down there. The road started as the pumper's going from the compressor station down to there.
That was a county road for years.
And it's never been a county road.
Yes, it is.
If, if we could, let's address the court, that way it doesn't get personal.
Ms. Eason, you're out of order. If you continue to be out of order, I'm going to remove you from the court.
I apologize, you're saying right.
Mr. Watts has the floor, if you have anything else you'd like to say, the court would love to hear it.
No, I just feel like, you know, with my land, I pay taxes on it, and the liability, I pay insurance on it and everything.
Yes, sir.
And I took all this into consideration. It ain't, she's got her, uh, access to the, uh, ninety-two. Everyone else on the east side, all they do, they come by there and shoot across the road for a shortcut. Which I don't have nothing against that.
There's lots of, lots of in Hardin County, and, and just like you said about the trash, I understand that, don't blame you if one did. I live in the city of Lumberton, I pick up trash out of my yard every Saturday. It's just how it is. But I definitely respect your wishes.
I can hear and there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my own here, I pay the taxes on it, why can't I use it?
I understand that as well, yes, sir. You have anything for it?
I don't.
Any other member of the court?
Are you maintaining it right now?
Yes, we, we have maintained it since I've been in office, twelve years.
As a prescriptive, as a prescriptive road, is that what you, uh, call it?
And, uh, my understanding, uh, it was old, probably thirty years ago. So it's been open, I know all of my life, that I can remember, we've been able to drive down it.
So this is a county road, he should be able to take the survey to the appraisal district, and then take it off the tax road?
They can take it off the tax road, but he also has the right in the transportation.
I don't know if you could sit on there, but you take any more land, you're going, you're going to be right at the back door, you know?
And as, as I explained to Ms. Eason, I'm completely neutral in this, I have to represent every party. And, uh, Mr. Watts does have that legal authority to petition the court.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
No, you know where I'm staying.
Yes, sir.
We do, okay.
Thank you very much. Is there any other citizen comment regarding this public hearing?
Thank you, Ms. Linda.
Ms. Eason, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else from any member of the court regarding the public hearing? Going once, going twice? Yes, sir, Mr. Marshall, come on up. Mr. Carl Marshall with South East Texas Regional Painting Commission?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, uh, the postal service, uh, all three would have to change their address. The two, uh, Ms. Eason and the other gentleman would have to change it to, um, Madison Drive.
Their mailbox would be on ninety-two, correct?
Yeah, they would have to move it, because currently I think it's on FM two-hundred, uh, seven. So it would have to be moved to ninety-two.
I think, Ms. Eason, is your mailbox on Magallion Road right now?
No, it's attached on the state road.
Okay, alright.
And I'm not sure about a neighbor across the street, but, uh, here's the, those two would change to, to Madison, and then Mr. Watts would change to the FM, the twenty-nine thirty-seven.
Okay, and they would have to move their mailboxes to ninety-two, it wouldn't be able to stay on that county road, which would be called Madison Drive?
Well, from what I understand from the post office, it would go to a different route. So she would have to move from, from that route to the other route. Plus the access, she would have to drive, you know, to ninety-two, go up, come back down around. So it would be quite, quite a drive for her mailbox, so...
All your position is, is that, uh, that road, if, if we selected Madison Drive or Madison Road, if that is, uh, the planning commission agrees with that, and y'all would then number those, uh...
Yes, we would, we'd probably keep the same addressing, uh, just change the name.
Just change the name of the road.
Uh, but we would need some leadway, w- once it's official, you know, it's going to be split up like that and, and... We need a couple of weeks for the post office to actually get the ball rolling on changing the addresses.
And full disclosure, uh, with the election coming up, uh, we may not take any action until, uh, after the first of the year. That way, nobody's disenfranchised or anything for their voting.
Okay. We just, just let this, you know, pass and we'll change it.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marshall. Anyone else? Commissioner, anything for it?
No, sir.
Alright. That will conclude the public hearing, and we'll move on to item number four. Excuse me, item four is approved minutes of the August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two regular and special meetings, and the August twenty-ninth, two thousand two, and the September sixth, two thousand twenty-two special meetings as presented by the county clerk. That motion by Commissioner Roberts, and a second by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, and approval of cash statement as presented by, it's going to be Ms. Joyce Lane here today on behalf of our county treasurer, Deborah McWilliams. Good morning, Ms. Lane.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of two million, sixteen thousand, seven hundred, ninety-one dollars and seventy cents. These vouchers are the county's bills and payroll-related expenses that were presented on August the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Our cash report summary, our general checking account has twelve million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred, thirty-five dollars and four cents. The tax pool general account has three hundred, twenty-two dollars and sixty-two cents, for a total of twelve million, four hundred, seventy-five thousand, four hundred, fifty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
Motion for this presented.
Second.
And a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Item eight, I'm sorry, item seven, authorization to pay county bills as presented by the county auditor, Angela Gore. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Did we approve the payroll schedules?
Yeah, skip six. Okay, let me go back to six. I tried to skip two of them. Number six, discussion and possible action concerning adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three county payroll schedule as requested by Deborah McWilliams, county treasurer. And, uh, this payroll schedule has been reviewed, uh, by Ms. McWilliams and the auditor, and, uh, to make sure that we have our holidays accounted for and what have you, and y'all all agree that this is a good schedule. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion?
I start, uh, when, when does, when do we have that year where one payroll's added into it?
I think it happens about every ten years.
You'll be gone, long gone by then.
Yeah, I was just making sure.
But we make sure every year.
I was, I was helping her, he probably didn't know about that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, item seven, I've already read it, so go ahead.
Our pre-approved expenditures for August twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth is six hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Pre-approved expenditures for August the thirtieth through the thirty-first is three hundred and four thousand, sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Pre-approved expenditures for September the seventh through the ninth is five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today are four hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, for a total expenditures and transfers of one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Gross payroll for August the twenty-fifth was five hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, and the total transfers for that payroll was nine hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Gross payroll for September the eighth was five hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents, and the total transfer for that payroll was six hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion for...
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Make sure you can skip down to that other item, let's go ahead and take care of that before. If it pleases the members of the court, we're going to skip down to the item on the, uh, alright. Thank you, I thought it was at the end. Let's, uh, let's look at number eleven. Since we have some, uh, citizens here that are interested in this, let's go ahead and take care of this, and we'll go back to number eight. Consider and possibly approve an order to close a seven hundred and fifteen foot by fifteen foot section of roadway called Magallion Road located in precinct two as requested by Mr. Paul Watts. Commissioner?
Judge, it'd be my recommendation, due to information that became available yesterday on the elections that we tabled this until January twenty twenty-three. And that way give the time for the elections to take place.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to table item number eleven, you want that on the, uh, second Tuesday of January?
Yes, sir.
And that will be on the second Tuesday of January, two thousand twenty-three, and that motion was seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll take that item back up again at ten a.m. on, uh, and I don't have the date in front of me, but it'll be our first meeting in January, which is the second Tuesday of January. Actually, I think I do have that date, and I'll give it to you in just a few minutes.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Watts, thank you, Ms. Eason.
Item number eight, discussion and possible action to approve and accept the finding in the minutes of the courts, a district court order setting the salaries of the county auditor, assistant county auditors, and official court reporters of the eighty-eighth and the three hundred and fifty-six judicial district courts for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. We have that order, uh, here in our packets, and the order coincides with the, uh, same, uh, salaries that were set, uh, the same rate increase of four point five percent for all of these individuals.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, discussion and possible action concerning an order setting the day of week and location of regular term schedule of the Hardin County Commissioners Court meetings for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. You'll have the proposed order in front of you, and the meetings will continue to be at ten a.m. on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. And it doesn't look like we have any holidays that conflict with that schedule for the next year.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten, discussion and possible action concerning the setting of the two thousand twenty-three county holidays. Have the county holiday schedule, and again, this is, uh, reviewed by the treasurer and the auditor, just to make sure that we're not going to, uh, close on a day that, uh, would, uh, prevent them from processing the payroll or county bills as, as needed. Has everybody had a chance to look at this, look this over?
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion?
I would just like to commend our treasurer and auditor. A lot of times we have holidays off, and they're up here working to make sure payroll occurs, and so y'all don't get those holidays. We appreciate y'all.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, consider and possibly accept or decline a bequest to Hardin County in the last will and testament of Mr. James Elmer Butler III, whereby Hardin County has named as a specific devisee in Mr. Butler's will to receive the estate's interest in the following three real properties located near Bassin, and they're listed on the agenda. Uh, this would be interest in these properties. If the county was to accept this bequest, we would not own the properties in full. And, uh, Ms. Cook, I had checked with you last week, I think it was, I think y'all were expecting a payment from, uh, the son for the back taxes, did y'all receive that?
I'm sorry, Judge, I don't have that information, I can get it.
Okay.
But I don't have that information, I know they did express an interest.
If it's okay with the court, can we pass this and we'll come back to it?
Move it to you.
Oh, we'll just pass it.
Yeah, we'll just pass it, and we'll come back to it in just a few minutes. Sorry, Ms. Cook, I should have called you this morning. Item thirteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Amanda Young to accept a reimbursement from WHC LLC on behalf of ExxonMobil Corporation in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to be utilized for repairs of specified county roads located in Commissioner Precinct Three, and authorize the county judge to sign the final settlement and release of all claims. If approved, amend the fiscal year twenty-two budget to create R and B revenue line item zero-one-seven-three-six-seven-one-oh-three, road repairs reimbursement R and B three, and R and B three expense line item oh-one-seven-six-two-three-three-nine-six, road repairs reimbursement expenses, and increase each line item by the approved reimbursement amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Commissioner Young, you want to say anything about it?
Uh, yeah, this is, um, ExxonMobil installed three new lines throughout Precinct Three, and, uh, there was just some road damage from construction, bringing in heavy equipment and stuff, so I've been working with them since May to come up with a number to, uh, reimburse the taxpayers for repairs, so I'm glad to see we have that.
Is this something that you would need to carry over for next year?
Yes, um, so I worked with the auditor's office to, um, to do this line item, so I can carry it over to next year to make the additional repairs I need to make.
And they were going to be here to present that today, but something came up?
Yeah, he's, uh, he has something going on with his ankle, he's on practice, so he met me this morning to give me the check and, and the release.
Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fourteen, consider adoption of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two, authorizing the submission of the fiscal year twenty-three bullet-resistant shield grant funding application to the office of Governor, Criminal Justice Division, as requested by Mr. Clay Woodward, grants coordinator.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, this is a no-match trend, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Alright, any other discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Mr. Wood, what does this consist of?
So, I'm applying for five bullet-resistant ballistic shields for, uh, Precinct Four Constable's office. They have an MOU in place right now with hard injection ISD to provide the security for the school. So, the sheriff suggested, since they are prioritized on the eligibility list, that they, that I apply the grant for them instead of the sheriff's office.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifteen, consider request by Sharon Whitley, Health Director, to authorize the county judge to execute professional services contract between Hardin County on behalf of women, infant, and children, also known as Whip, and Christina Cipollentes for International Board Certified Lactation Consultant Services effective October first, twenty twenty-two, and that term will end on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is this just a renewal, Ms. Whitley?
Yes.
And, uh, no changes in the agreement other than just the term, is that right?
That's correct.
Alright, and, uh, Mr. Minnick reviewed the agreement? Thank you very much.
My turn.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I never knew I'd have to say lactation in court. But I did. Probably not my first time, this first time I thought about it. Item sixteen, consider request by Sharon Whitley, Health Director, to authorize the county judge to execute professional services contract between Hardin County on behalf of Whip and Michelle Miller to provide nutrition counseling services effective October first, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Same thing? Thank you very much.
My turn.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Cook? You want to go back to number twelve?
Yes, if that's...
Yes, ma'am, that'd be great, thank you.
Oh, the family did pay the property taxes, they was only one year due.
Okay.
But keep in mind, this is only a one thirty-second interest.
Right, on the first one.
And one fifth.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other one doesn't have the interest, but it, they are paid, all the taxes are paid. I understand the family, uh, Kimberly Bryant is the person, I think that's the daughter, so that's all.
So everything's paid to date?
Yes, sir.
Anything that was back owed or current is, is all paid up?
They only had the one year due, so, and they paid those. They only had the one-year due, so, and they paid those, I saw.
Uh, just for the court, as I understand it, I think I forwarded y'all an email from a Mr. Lofton. Uh, I think that Mr. Butler had owed some back taxes, and I think that he decided to put it in his will that if the county wanted that tax money, that he'd just bequest that property, or his interest in that property to the county, and we'd figure out how to cover those taxes, that's my understanding from Mr. Lofton. If we won't accept this bequest, we would be part owners, and we would, like Ms. uh, Cook said, on the first property, we would own a one-thirty-second interest, and the second property would be a one-fifth interest with other people, and on the third property, I'm not sure what the interest is there, uh, I don't know if that's full interest or not. Uh, talked to Mr. Minnick about this, he had to be at, uh, Silvy ISD this morning, he said, uh, we needed to counsel with him, and, uh, he couldn't be here, he apologized. He said we could table it, and he could be here to, to talk to us the next time. My recommendation is if the taxes are paid, that we decline the bequest, but that's up to the members of the court. Motion to decline. Yeah. Alright, have motion by Judge McDaniel to decline the bequest, saving to back Commissioner Roberts. Any other discussion? Thank you very much, Ms. Cook.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seventeen, discussion and possible action concerning appointments to the Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation District Board of Directors as follows. First would be the reappointment of Mr. Roger Fussell as the Presiding Officer and Board President to serve a new three-year term effective January first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Second would be the reappointment of Mr. Bobby Rogers as, as, uh, Director to serve a new three-year term effective January first, two thousand twenty-three, and that term would end December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five as well. So much.
Thank you.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saving to back Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, I'll say that both of those gentlemen do an excellent job on that board, and we appreciate them. Item eighteen, consider request by Ms. Connie Becken, County Clerk, to authorize the county judge to sign a notice of general election to be held on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two. So much.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, saving to back Commissioner Roberts, Ms. Becken, anything you wanna say about it?
I'm sure, thank you.
Alright. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nineteen, consider request by Misty Sims, Purchasing Agent, to authorize the county judge to sign real property agreement between Harden County and City of Sour Lake for office spray, office space located at six fifteen, Highway one oh five west in Sour Lake for the County Commissioner Office, Precinct Three, and the Justice of the Peace Court, Precinct Four.
Thank you, sir.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Young, saving to back Commissioner Cooper, all, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to sell the following seized forfeited items, a nineteen ninety-eight Honda Rancher four-wheeler, VIN number ending in forty-three ninety-five, a nineteen ninety-eight Honda Rancher four-wheeler, VIN numbering in, VIN number ending in nineteen fifty-one, a nineteen ninety-eight Yamaha YFM two fifty four-wheeler, VIN number ending in twenty-eight twenty-seven, a two thousand model Honda Rancher four-wheeler, VIN number ending in twenty-nine sixty-nine, and a two thousand two Honda four-wheeler, VIN number ending in nine, I'm sorry, zero-nine-four-two. If approved, all of these will be sold utilizing the Renee Bates Auctioneers Incorporated at ReneeBates.com.
Thank you, sir.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Young, saving to back Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? As old as this four-wheeler's are, you might have seen some of them.
So you stole all of them?
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Misty, those will be posted today or when?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and if somebody's interested, they just go to ReneeBates.com?
Yes, sir.
Is there a link to that on your page too?
I believe so.
Alright, great. Item twenty-one, consider approval of request by Misty Sims, Purchasing Agent, to present the results of bids received for overlaying approximately seven hundred and thirty feet on Canal Lane, that's actually North Canal Lane, and approximately five hundred and forty-two feet on Taylor Lane, both located in Precinct Four, and awarded successful vendors, possibly. Ms. Sims?
Bids were open on September eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at two PM in the Purchasing Department office. Myself and Erica Singletary were present, and received one bid from CMM Construction for six dollars and twenty-five cents a square yard.
Now, uh, before somebody moves or during discussion, uh, didn't you get a bid from CMM last week for about half that price for square yard? Was it a lot more?
Yeah, it's distance.
Okay, so since it's less, they're charging more, or mobilizing?
It goes by distance.
Gotcha. Just wanted to make sure, 'cause we're only getting one bid, and I wanted to make sure they weren't taking advantage, that's all, and I'm not accusing them of that, it was passing.
Yeah.
Alright, any motion?
Make the motion.
Thanks.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, saving to back Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-two, consider approval of request by Misty Sims, Purchasing Agent, to present results of bids received for materials and emulsions for all Ruin Bridge precincts, and possibly award a successful vendor, Ms. Sims?
Bids were open on September eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at two PM in the Purchasing Department office. Myself and Erica Singletary were present.
Do you wanna just read the, uh, low bid on each one?
Yes, sir.
And if there's a one in a two, then just read each one.
Well, and I won't know that, and y'all, we all just stop me if.
Sure. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
The first one is Seal Coat Aggregate, we received no bid. Next one is Hot Mix Asphalt Concrete Pavement. Gulf Coast at the plant is eighty-five dollars a ton and delivered ninety-seven fifty a ton. Hot Mix Cold Lay Asphalt Concrete Pavement. Gulf Coast at the plant is one oh two a ton, and delivered is one fourteen fifty a ton. Limestone Baser Equipment Road Material, East Texas Asphalt at thirty-two seventy-five a ton, and delivered at forty cents per ton from Livingston. I did wanna point out, they have a fuel surcharge, the rate is one dollar and forty-two cents per September, so I didn't know if y'all wanted to award a one and two on that one, or if that one's okay.
I would like to order one and two.
So one would be East Texas, and then two would be Gulf Coast, is that correct?
Correct.
Alright. So does the rest of the members of the court agree?
Yes.
So the ball could not bid?
Their bid was late, it was a whole day late, so I'll let them know about that, but there's nothing I can do.
Okay.
Mr. Cooper, did you have something?
Yes, you have, uh, delivered, you have Gulf Coast, uh, showing number one, correct or not?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so, let's go back, would East Texas Asphalt at the plant and Gulf Coast delivered, is that, is that the award?
I think that's how I read it.
Yes, it is.
Then we mostly, we get delivered.
Yes.
We're not gonna pick it up.
Yeah.
That is correct, yes.
Alright, so, the limestone baser equipment road material, if it's picked up, it'll be picked up at East Texas Asphalt, and if it's delivered, it'll be ordered from Gulf Coast, correct?
Right.
Thank y'all.
Gets so confusing.
Yeah.
Next one is Slade Coat Products, Cat Excavation at the plant for thirty dollars a ton, delivered forty-three dollars a ton. Coverstone, we received no bid. Grade four and three-eights washed pea gravel, no bid. Field Dirt, Cat Excavation at the plant is six dollars. And Gary Whitman Materials is also six dollars at the plant, and delivered Gary Whitman Materials, deli, I'm sorry, is eleven fifty a cubic yard. So do you wanna award a one and two? They're the same price, they're really kicking in for me, I wanna bet the plant.
Can we just award the both of them, and the commissioners can decide who they wanna order from?
Yes, sir, that's fine, okay, on delivered as well?
Delivered is gonna be, uh, Gary Whitman.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is pine ridge sand. Cat Excavation at the plant is six dollars a cubic yard, Gary Whitman at the plant is also six dollars a cubic yard, and delivered Gary Whitman at eleven fifty. So they'll kind of be the same as the other one.
So does this matter?
Ride Base, no bid. Bahama Base, Gulf Coast at the plant's forty-three dollars a ton, delivered fifty-four dollars a ton. Rapid Road Repair, no bid. Super Patch High Performance Road Repair Mix, um, I didn't know, I know there's been some discussion on whether it was same material from Gulf Coast and East Texas Asphalt, so it was how that y'all decide on that one.
Yeah, East Texas is, uh, a better quality, uh, super patch, and then Gulf Coast, uh, is, it's really, it's a high performance, but it's not a super patch. And did, uh, Waller County not bid on it?
I'm sorry. I didn't receive anything from them.
'Cause their stuff has been excellent. Their super patch has been excellent. So for super patch, it would be, uh, East Texas Asphalt, and then for high performance, it would be Gulf Coast, so.
Number one, East Texas?
Yes, sir. They're actually both number one, 'cause they're really not the same product.
Gotcha. Alright, all the members of the court agree?
Yes.
And you're clear?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Next one is one-inch washed limestone, Gulf Coast at the plant for forty-two dollars a ton, delivered fifty-eight dollars a ton. Crushed concrete, Gulf Coast at the plant for twenty-three dollars a ton, delivered thirty-four dollars a ton. And Gary Whitman Materials also has it delivered for thirty-four dollars a ton.
So award the both?
So just to award those?
Yes, sir.
Concrete stabilized sand, those are a little hard to decipher too, because one is one sack of cement for cubic yard, and then they, each additional point five sack is three dollars, and then Gulf Coast has it for one point, it's one point five sacks. So I don't know which one y'all use, or if you wanted to award those.
If I understand it correctly, and I know they did not bid, but, uh, I think my foreman advised me that, uh, Nick's on three twenty-seven is getting set up to, uh, have a stabilized sand.
Yes.
Real out there, so.
Good.
Anyway.
Yeah, we, we would typically use the one and a half sack.
Okay.
Which one?
Depending on what you.
Gulf Coast.
Yeah, depending on what we did.
Cause they're used much as five sack, uh.
Correct.
So they award as Gulf Coast? Is that correct?
You need a number one and number two, 'cause, uh, like Commissioner Roberts said, if we have to increase it to five sacks, then we would just have to get the best, best price out of the two.
So, uh, number one is Gulf Coast, and number two is Nice River, is that how y'all wanna go?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
O P F forty-two aggregate base, no bid. X Seal five fifty, no bid. And then Gary Whitman Materials bid, another material that we didn't ask for, if y'all are interested in that one, it's one by three or three dot five, but crushed concrete.
We all yours, didn't we?
Aye.
You are? Alright, so let's go ahead and award that other material that you just listed, too, Gary Whitman Materials, because, uh, okay with the list of names.
From what I remember, it looks like all the limestone bases up about ten dollars per ton from the last bid, just up like that.
Hot asphalt, I don't know.
Yeah, it's one of them. Motion approved, that's for sure.
Seven.
Oh, we're doing both. Will you rescind that motion?
I rescind, thank you.
Bids for promotions are received on September eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at two PM in the Purchasing Department office. Myself and Erica Singletary were present. Item A is emulsified asphalt SS one, CRS two, and CRS two H. Martin Asphalt at the plant for two seventy-five a gallon, delivered two eighty-seven a gallon. Asphalt item three hundred AC ten, Martin Asphalt at the plant for two oh five a gallon, and delivered three dollars and two cents a gallon. Road Oil MC eight hundred, Martin Asphalt at the plant for three fifty a gallon, delivered three sixty-eight a gallon. AES three hundred, Martin Asphalt at the plant for three twenty a gallon, delivered three thirty-seven a gallon. Prime Coat AEP, Martin Asphalt at the plant for three twenty a gallon, delivered three thirty-seven a gallon. Tac Oil, um, RC two fifty, item three hundred, Martin Asphalt at the plant for three fifty-five a gallon, delivered three sixty-seven a gallon. MC thirty at the plant, five oh five, and delivered five eighteen, I'm sorry, I read that one wrong. MC thirty is Martin Asphalt at the plant, three sixty-five, and delivered three eighty-two. And the last one is Cracked Fuel Oil, Fried Brian Asphalt at the plant, seven hundred dollars per ton, and delivered seven thirty five.
Motion through that to them.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saving to back Commissioner Roberts, any discussion?
I would just like to say, on this last one on the crushed concrete, I think it may be something that Misty needs to check into, even though we didn't ask for it and he submitted a price. If it's something you are interested in, you may have to go out for bid and specifically ask for it. Because you may have some other vendors state that they didn't have a chance because you didn't ask for that product.
Thank you for that, so, uh, is the court okay with removing that from the motion, and, uh, if y'all are interested, let's go out for bid on that, uh, material?
Yes, yes.
Alright, so, uh, we'll do that. Misty, if you don't mind, uh, I guess put on the next agenda approval to go out for bids for that material specifically, and we'll go out for bids.
When, when does it, this take, uh, effect?
September twenty-third.
September twenty-third?
Yes, sir.
Miss, oh, we're in the event that, uh, prior to us going out for bid, if someone happens to need that product, uh, in order to be, uh, fair and right, get more than one bid, not worry, don't just go to one location, this.
Get at least three quotes.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Anything else?
My two overlays just went up really considerably.
Hmm, alright. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can we, can we make it, uh, effective October first?
Well, the one that you're currently under is, is, is finished, it expires on the twenty-third, so that's why I had it effective on the twenty-third.
Cause you're gonna get stuck too.
Hmm.
Unless we can get Tommy up here?
I'm working on it. Is there any other way around that to save the, the money? Is there any way to extend what we currently have? I guess, I guess there's not, if it expires and we didn't have it on the agenda today to extend it.
Right. Yeah, and we asked for six months, and what, would they go for six months' trial?
Yeah, it's going up from sixty-eight to eighty-five dollars.
Maybe they'd honor it for one more week. On the twenty-third to the thirty.
Same company had the bid on both?
No, they've changed.
Yeah, changed.
Uh, from LD to.
That's, that was the minimum bid, was eighty-five.
Nice try, but hate to see that, but I guess that's, we're stuck by. Following the hall, helps us and hurts us sometimes. Um, if anybody wants to see the other bids that were submitted, that's available if you go to the county website and look at this agenda, it's, it's on there for item number twenty-one, or actually, uh, twenty-two. Sorry?
I, I'll vote to vote.
Did we vote?
No.
Let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-three, consider approval of request by Mr. Dale Williford, Hawthorne Field County Airport FBO, to apply for the Tech Dot Aviation Routine Airport Maintenance Program, also known as RAMP. This is a cost share grant for fiscal year twenty-three. Commissioner Cooper, I know you and, uh, Mr. Williford have discussed this a few times, you wanna make any comments regarding that?
Yes, I would, uh, first off, uh, say that Mr. Williford has, uh, pursued this, uh, and he just informed me this week that he has a meeting in Austin in reference to this, uh, coming up pretty quick, and everything is looking good on this, so I would move that we, uh, approve it.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, saving to back Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-four, consider approval, approval of request by Misty Sims, Purchasing Agent, to authorize the county judge to sign a local agreement with National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, NCPA. This is, uh, just a new cooperative purch, purchasing program?
Yes, sir.
And there's no cost?
Correct.
We just need to enter into this so that we can take advantage of some, uh, cooperative purchasing prices on, I think y'all are looking at some software, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Young, saving to back Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-five, discussion by any, uh, official of any item that's not on the agenda without taking any action. Just wanted to, uh, remind everyone that the groundbreaking today at the New Silvy Fire Station is at five PM, right there at the corner of four eighteen and ninety-two. And then for all county employees, the health fair is on September the twenty-seventh, two weeks from today, it begins at seven AM. And if anybody wants to, uh, get, uh, fasting labs, they're only gonna be here till eleven thirty, so if you were planning to go at lunch, they're not gonna be here. Try to go early if you can. Anybody have anything else, any member of the court?
The Doorstore Road Project is underway, we're doing a good job, so we appreciate that. And then, just, uh, um, something I've noticed is that under President Trump, our material got to be very affordable for our taxpayers, and the current administration, it's going up, maybe we can put some of that electrical asphalt down here in a few years. But, uh, just an observation that under the liberal government, we're paying way more, and the tax money's not going as far.
Any other member of the court, or any official present, have anything they wanna say? Alright, it's night, we'll move on to item twenty-six.
Same.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn, saving to back Commissioner Roberts, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.